All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'm going to skip reading the agenda, save a few minutes, go right to the Pledge Allegiance. Mike, seeing as you're concentrated, why don't you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Do we have anything emailed in for citizens' input? Okay. Do we want to introduce?
Sure, we can do that. Is that, well, why don't we just, he's further down on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so we'll go with COVID-19 update.
Yeah. All right, so, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, with, just going to get right into the numbers, not going to do a significant COVID-19 update today. I'll let Mike talk about the reopening phase when he gets to, when they wrap up here. But the numbers look, again, continue to look good. A total of 117 cases since March 15th, 102 have recovered, three cases currently active in town, and 11 cases were lost in the follow-up phase. 1,419 people have tested negative, and there were currently no hospitalized patients, which is great news. And only one person has died as a result of the COVID-19 impacts. 16 people have tested with positive with the antibody testing program that's in place now. And Norfolk County-wide, there were 9,306 cases and 941 deaths associated with that, which, the 9,306 cases has not really moved significantly in the past two weeks. It's been just over 9,000 cases for the past few weeks now, so those cases have really slowed down overall, county-wide basis. Hospitalizations, there, we have 12,300 beds available statewide, and there are 662 cases being hospitalized right now, 102 cases in the ICU as we speak. Biggest group that's been impacted by, in terms of, in terms of fatality rate is, of course, the 80-plus group, and 70 is behind that group, rather significantly different, though, in terms of impact. But yet, the biggest group that has been infected, though, is in the 50 to 59 age group. That is, right behind that is the 30 to 39 age group, so closely, in terms of numbers, actually, pretty close. And then 80, the 80-plus group is probably the next closest group behind that. But on a statewide level, we have 110 cases, 110,338 cases, and over 900,000, 900 and, let me see, my eyes are getting bad here, 901,221 people have been tested, which is great news, almost a million people tested statewide. So those are the latest numbers on what's going around, in and around Foxborough and in the county, and around the Commonwealth at this time. So I'll turn it over to Mike for the reopening information.
So, the big news is that we reopened this building yesterday. And, you know, it's been, you know, we've had a steady flow of traffic. I think there are probably a lot of people on vacation, although I'm sure they can't travel very far. But folks who have come in over the last couple of days will notice it's a new environment. So like most other places that they go, there's the signs on the doors, there's a screening process, so I'll walk you through that briefly. So, we have a sandwich board out on the sidewalk, and it does say, "We are open, masks required, and check-in at the desk." We have volunteers currently at the greeter desk, welcoming folks in, asking them a series of seven questions to make sure that they are not displaying some of the most prominent symptoms of COVID-19. And then they are allowed to go on to their, you know, destination or place of doing business into that department. The departments, all except for one, have a Plexiglas screen up and social distance markings where people can conduct their business in a safe manner, protecting both the public and the employees. That one that is not included is the Veterans Department, because there is not a counter or a window there. That department, we're requesting people to make appointments. And we have secured the small conference room at the end of the hallway on the first floor for business to be conducted there, but people do need to call in to make appointments for that. We also are encouraging folks to continue doing business the way they have been doing business, so that we can maintain social distance and serve the folks that are showing up to the building. So, continue to take advantage of the online permitting, online licensing, online bill payment. For folks that are showing up with an envelope to pay their bills, they can still be dropped into the tax box, you know, at the curbside. And then for all other departments, it does help if folks are calling to get their questions answered and make appointments there as well, but not required as they are in the Veterans Department. So the governor has raised some of the numbers where we are now into Phase Three as of yesterday. So previously, we had a maximum of 10 people allowed in a gathering, now we're up to 25. So we do have more seats out and have a larger capacity. We're asking that chairs of boards, committees, and commissions, you know, keep an eye on that, so that they're not going over that 25-maximum capacity. Also, the governor has raised the outdoor gathering maximum up to 100, and that's with restrictions, with social distancing and, you know, masks required. The, I guess that's my update. Everything else remains about the same. We're still, the library, we're still waiting for the go-ahead on that, you know, services in addition to what they're currently doing, which is the curbside, and any further services from the Council on Aging.
Great, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Bill, back to you.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, we're pleased to announce and also introduce to you the new town engineer for the town of Foxborough, Lance Del Priore. Come on up, Lance, for a second, and he has something he wants to share with you, and of course, Chris Gallagher, the DPW director, is now here, and the person who held Lance's job before him, so appropriate that he'd be here tonight. So, we are particularly pleased to have Lance with us tonight, and congratulate him for just recently completing the Suffolk program. The Suffolk program is the Suffolk University Certificate Program of Local Government Leadership and Management, and he is now a graduate. He actually joins a pretty distinct group here in Foxborough, including two folks in our own office, Mike Johns and Christina Metcalf, who graduated within the past few years. And it's interesting that Lance comes on at this time just as Nick left. Nick Ritchio was also a graduate of that program. He left, and Lance comes on, so, and before that, Mary Beth was a graduate of the program, and then Nick came on, so we keep bringing him on, and so we end up netting out around four people in the organization at this point in time, which is actually a pretty high number in comparison to most organizations around the state, so we're actually very grateful to have that number in place, and...
I think we're up to five now.
We're up to five now?
Including Aaron, our director of...
Yes, Aaron, I'm sorry, I forgot that Aaron.
And Veronica Harvey, who's our Assistant Treasurer Collector.
Yeah, so we're up to five now, so that's pretty significant. And then Marie Almodova is going to be applying for the finance program, which is only the second class that they've held in this program statewide. She'll be applying to go in the fall to be part of this program. So this is, this is a graduate-level program for those people who've attained their undergraduate degrees, but now looking to advance their leadership skills and management skills, and can now go on to get their MBA if they so choose on their own, but they get a good jump start by going through the Suffolk program that's being sponsored. And he actually, we actually say thank you to the town of, to the town of Sharon for paying for this, because we stole Lance from the town of Sharon in the process, so you'll be pleased to note that he wouldn't pay for any of that. So that was a good thing, too. So, thank you very much, Fred Turkington, I'll thank him when I see him next.
Thanks, Fred.
One other comment on Lance's accomplishments. So he's just recently been accepted into the Suffolk University Masters in Public Administration program, so Sharon's money that they put into his certificate is at 15 credits of that, or 12 credits of that are actually going towards his master's degree program, so it's great that he's been accepted at that program.
So, congratulations, and welcome to that esteemed group.
Happy to be here.
All right, great.
Welcome, Lance.
Nice to meet everyone, put faces and be seen for, you know...
That's right, yeah, finally, finally. So it's interesting, we were talking earlier that Lance has actually been with us since March.
Yeah.
And this is only the second time we've actually had a face-to-face meeting since he's been here, because we've been all, everything's been through video and Zoom types of meetings. But tell us a little bit about your background, Lance, I think everybody would like, love to hear a little bit more about you.
Yeah, no, yeah, like you said, I was the, previously the Assistant Town Engineer over in Sharon, I was there for about five years.
Lance, pull the microphone up a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Is that better?
Yeah, it's better, much better.
Tell the folks at home, can you?
Yep. I was excited at the opportunity to come work in Foxborough, you know, obviously the next step in my career, so I was looking for a town engineer position, also Foxborough just, you know, a community that, you know, everyone's familiar with, you know, it's got a good reputation, you know, as a good place to work, a good place to live, you know, just a well-rounded community, so I was excited for the opportunity. You know, Chris has been great, sort of onboarding me in these challenging situations, you know, it's not easy, but, you know, everyone's been good, but, you know, it's, you know, hopefully things get back to normal, you know, I'd like to get away from the Zoom chats a little bit and start meeting people like this, this is always ideal.
Actually saved on his commuting time, because he lives in North Attleboro, so he was, instead of going to Sharon, he gets to stop in Foxborough now.
Right. I was driving by here on my way to work, and now I just get to stop a little bit sooner, so...
Where'd you work before Sharon?
So before Sharon, I worked for Weston and Sampson Engineers, and for about five years, and prior to that, I was in the United States Air Force.
Thank you.
So...
So another military guy.
Yeah.
Chris's approval.
There you go. All right. So, anybody on the board have anything they want to say?
Well, welcome. Good to see you.
Great to be here.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
He tried them on before the meeting.
Welcome.
I appreciate it, thank you, yeah.
Welcome to Foxborough.
Excellent.
And congratulations on completing that program.
Yeah, it was a great program.
And that's a certificate.
Yes, it's a certificate, I figured I'd bring it, since we were talking about it, I figured I'd bring it with me.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I already put it in a frame, so...
Proves that you actually did it.
Exactly. It's my proof.
We're pleased to see that.
That's great, congratulations on that, and coming on board, and hopefully it'll be a nice continuation of your career here.
Yeah, everything looks good so far, I'm excited to be here, so...
Well, thanks for coming by tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Chairman, while Chris is still here, we have the issue on the update on the trash-barrel discussion, I don't know if you want to just touch upon that, because it's...
We can, but was anybody else going to come in?
That I don't know.
Had you heard from anyone else?
Haven't heard from anyone else.
I chatted with Deb, I don't know whether she was coming or not, but...
She's on vacation this week, so...
I know, I knew, okay, I knew Heather was away, I didn't know, but I...
Then we may as well, if everybody's away anyway.
Not to leave them out, but I know they're both away at this point in time, so...
Oh, in that case, yeah, we're ahead.
So, I mean, it should be a pretty quick update. Deb actually worked with UMM to figure out where the barrels should go, so they did set out 20 barrels last Monday, so a little over a week ago. I actually drove around last, yesterday morning, checked all the barrels, there were three that were getting close to three-quarters full, the rest of them had pretty minimal trash in them, you know, a couple water bottles, a coffee cup, a couple bags of Doritos. So it was actually, the skate park was the fullest, the way the kids have taken to that being open, that barrel is certainly getting used. The one right next to the booth playground, it's probably about half-full, had a pizza box and some other, you know, miscellaneous trash. And then actually, the softball field up at the high school was about two-thirds, three-quarters full. Everything else was pretty minimal, so I spoke with Anthony, with UMM this morning, kind of filled him in on how they're going, how they're filling up. So he's going to go around, they're going to empty all 20 either tomorrow or Thursday, and then we'll keep an eye on them. He's going to plan every other week, if they need to be emptied more than that, then it's a quick phone call, and he'll get a guy in a truck to empty them. But it seems like the 20, where they've been placed, is working. There are still some water bottles left floating around the baseball fields after games, and again, as coaches and as the tree and park department always does, we pick up after ourselves and try to do our best, and tree and park picks up before they mow any fields, so it's good to see, you know, people are still adhering to take home what they bring with them. It's working, and it gives us some insight to how, what the trash might look like in the future. You know, we may not need 150 barrels, you know, in the future, but for now, for the summer, the way UMM has set up and stepped up to help us out has been good.
So if one of us goes by and sees a full barrel, would we call you, your office, is there someone...
Yeah, you can just give me a call, send me an email, either way, and it's...
Barrel such and such a place is full.
Yep, yep, and then I'll work with Deb when she gets back next week, just to have somebody else get another set of eyes on them, and anytime something's getting close, we'll give them a call if they haven't been there recently.
Right, okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, I mean, obviously, I was very vocal at the last meeting when we talked about it, I reached out to Deb, she was thrilled, I'm glad, you know, for me, if the recs happy, the people who are maintaining the fields are happy, you know, that makes me happy, and I'm, I think what's going to happen is, even when the barrels were all out, people are still going to throw trash on the ground, so I think, you know, I think that's, that just happens, whether, you know, but I'm glad that, glad that you guys got it all worked out, and I did reach out to her like a week ago, and she said they were thrilled, that barrels went out, they helped with where they were going to be placed, and they were happy, and so I'm glad it all worked out.
That brings up another point, though, what about Pace and Road, is a couple of barrels down there, too, because I remember Doug coming in...
There are, so there's two over by the playground, one at the playground, and then one further back by the basketball court. There's two over leading into the baseball field where the concession stand is, and then there's, they dropped another one over by Ernie George Field.
Perfect, great.
Actually, let me, just because I did, someone, she's, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I did get an email from somebody, he's involved with Midget Football, and obviously it wasn't Doug, and he said, you know, he was concerned, because he said, you know, "We pay for our barrels, our trash to be, you know, it's not part of the town trash," and that a lot of stuff was coming over, but then I think, from what Deb said, Doug was going to touch base and just kind of get word out to the baseball guys that that's, they shouldn't be dumping it there, and they would bring it to another barrel, so I think they worked it out themselves, too.
Yeah, it seemed like they did, you know, like I said, UMM did place a barrel over there, they were going to empty the four barrels that they had that had been used over the last, you know, four or five months, and then Midget Football should take those barrels that are theirs and move them back inside their gate and get them out of sight.
Yeah.
But it seems like, I know Doug reached out to Anthony, and they were working that out.
Yeah, that's great.
Just a public service announcement, that we still encourage people to carry and carry out, even though we have the limited barrels there, the rules are still in place, they have not removed those rules, to my knowledge, and so we're still under a limited ability to do that work at the normal way that we would do it. And then also, to be clear about the fact that this is a temporary measure that's put in place, and that we're following the regulations set by the state, and we're grateful for UMM for stepping up and helping us during this period of time.
And the gentleman that emailed you, we all got it.
Oh, that's right.
And I responded, Bill responded, so...
Both responded.
Yeah, I did as well, I just thought, just in case he was watching, just to know that we had taken in his comments. That's right, Doc, you're right.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
We've got a continuation of the public hearing, are they coming in, should we do some other...
I think they're online.
See Katie?
Zooming in, there's Katie.
Hi, yes, they're both on Zoom.
Everybody knows Katie, right?
It's Craig and Jimmy.
Say that again?
Katie's our licensing clerk and also executive assistant, so we just wanted to make sure that she's, you know, I think we sort of concluded that following the last few licensing things, that we said, we probably best to have her zoom in at these meetings, that way it's a lot easier for her to answer the questions better than we are, so thanks for being here, Katie.
Sure.
So, they, I saw them on earlier.
Oh, I, we are still five minutes early, though.
Okay.
Should we do something else and...
Yeah, why don't you come back to it?
Come back to it, since it...
Nope, they're here.
Yeah, you are here.
Can you hear?
Oh, there they are.
Oh, there they are.
Okay, great, there they are, all right.
Oh, good, you guys ready to continue?
We sure are, yes, sir.
Can we get the volume louder?
Yeah, we'll see if we can turn it up. You turn up your volume on your...
No, I think it's...
There he is, he's good.
There it is.
So, so this was a continuation of a public hearing two weeks ago, with Union Straw looking to make an application to alter their premises. Those of you that walk or drive down McKinnick Street can see the beautiful job they did with the new patio. Right now, it's being used under the temporary regulations, but we're looking to, or they are looking to make it a permanent change in their premises. There was a little snag we had two weeks ago, so we had to postpone it two weeks, and here we go. You guys are all ready, dotted your i's, crossed your t's, and talk a little bit about the patio.
Yes, sir, we're extremely excited for what the future holds for us, we can't thank you guys enough for allowing us and helping us to move forward with getting that patio We really think it's going to help, you know, not only business around, it's beautiful, and we really thank you guys enough for helping us move forward and get these things in place. It's something that we've been discussing for the past few months, and, you know, with everything going on with COVID, we felt that there was no better time than now to move forward with it, and we're extremely pleased with how it's turned out and the response from the town. Everybody seems to love it tremendously so far, and we really look forward to what the future holds with the patio in the town of Foxborough.
Great, I know, I've walked by it numerous times, it looks very classy, very well-done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Not a question, but I think by going past there, it's a great outlet, and it seems to draw a lot of customers, which is good for the community, so I think it was an expansion well worthwhile, thank you.
The only question, are we, did we increase the seating capacity of the whole restaurant, or is it still the same capacity, just have the outdoor patio?
I'm sorry, guys, you actually just froze, so we didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
The patio does look beautiful, I've driven by it several times, with what we're approving tonight, are we approving additional seating in the restaurant, or same seating, just an alteration of the premise?
Oh, no, I lost her.
No, we lost them.
They didn't want to answer.
Yeah, that was a tough question.
I think it's a, it's sort of like that catch-22, I think it's in addition, because that's why they want to make it permanent, more seating, but with the whole COVID thing, it still falls under the, Phase Three's still 25% of, was it up to 50%?
It's actually not a percentage, you just have to be, the tables have to be six feet apart.
Yeah, but I wasn't even going, I'm not even thinking COVID, like, when a restaurant gets approved, it goes before the planning board, and, you know, there's X amount of seats.
Right, until Katie gets back on, I believe it is an alteration of premise that is expanding, so it is, they did a temporary one for the outdoor dining, so they had a temporary setup with a tent, and then this is to permanently alter it with the addition of the patio, so I believe the...
Additional space.
There'll be an additional 36 seats to this restaurant.
I believe so.
Okay, all right. And that doesn't have to go before Planning Board?
I believe Planning is aware of it, and this is where we did it, the temporary, and then the permanent alteration of premise.
I don't know, would that be a function of your bathroom capacity?
Theoretically, it should be, and that's why, I mean, my, I'm not opposed to any of this, but I just want to make sure that we've checked every box.
We actually, the Building Commissioner has signed off on all that piece, that piece of it, so we're good with that.
Yeah, I'm looking it up again, it's downloading slow, but I thought I saw that also.
Right.
And same with public health.
Yes.
Yeah. Can we get them back again, or, oh, okay, sorry.
It's my wire.
They're both trying to log in, should they, they should have just come back, you guys keep freezing, no, you guys froze, so they, for some reason, the connection's just a bad connection tonight.
So, Doc, where do you see all those sign-offs, because I don't see that on anything that I have?
If you go under, I have them all, all the things are here, so it must be under...
I'm looking them all up now, too.
Yeah, I'm telling manager, number five, Public Hearing, I think if you go there, I must have been already clicked on there.
Sorry, everybody, we're having some technical difficulties getting Union Straw back on again.
You can't get up, you can't get the link back in. They may just show up here, because it sounds like they were going to try and do that, based upon what I just saw from Katie.
They are just around the corner.
I told them to run down, how can, how can I get on? You can...
We should be up in a couple of minutes.
All right, do I, all right, let's give them a few more minutes to come down and...
Have the recall ready, can you?
That's the first time we've, all the time we've used Zoom.
Yeah, we've not had a problem.
Yeah, we haven't had a problem.
They are on their way.
Okay, so let's skip that for a second.
Come back to it.
We'll come back to it, seeing as how...
In the meantime, Jess is here.
We'll talk about the sports, craft sports, craft sports and entertainment, temporary outdoor license application. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
So, Jess Yenos with Craft Sports and Entertainment. Basically, just here this evening, kind of going over the license that this board already approved. The original conversation was to have some live events take place in our West Club parking lot, and we've made the decision now to shift that programming into the building, so everything is essentially the same, so it's still a drive-in concept, it'll just be drive-in onto the field. The capacity is about 180. Right now, there are only three events that we are hoping to use with this setup, which should just be some Revs away game, away match viewing events, so you drive onto the field and watch the Revs match on the field on our existing HD boards, come in through the north and out through the south. It's no food and beverage, no concessions, it's bring your own, no alcohol is allowed, and we will have socially-distanced pedestrian walkways and setups for restrooms.
This still has to get approved by the state, right?
It's already approved by the state because it falls underneath, I think, the Phase Two opening, which was like the outdoor movie drive-in concept.
Okay.
Are there potential for acts and bands, like, I know the way it was proposed to us before, it was outside, set up a stage, and hopefully get a few acts.
Yeah, like some...
Local bands.
Yeah, local bands or comedic acts, that's still a conversation we're having. At this point, it's only something that we'd be looking to do in July and August, so I'm not sure how viable that is, but potentially, yeah, still be able to have some level of scaled-down entertainment, but again, with that reduced capacity of only 180 vehicles, which is the max amount that we could fit on the field.
Okay.
And that's the only, you're only looking to do this July and August, nothing else?
Yes, yep, as of right now. If for some reason something changed, we certainly would be back before you, as of this moment, and obviously, things are evolving and changing so quickly, it does look like the Patriots will be playing and playing, you know, on the field at Gillette Stadium, so the field will be occupied for football. And same with the Revs, the Revs will come back and be playing on the stadium field, so there's just a short window of time, or a small window of time we have.
Okay.
So, in short, you're no longer going to do the West parking lot, it's just going to do, everything's going to be in the stadium?
Oh, yeah, yes, this is, that operation is just now shifted in the building. The Hard Rock Stadium, the Dolphin Stadium in Miami's done a couple of drive-in movies using this concept on their field, and it's been really well-received, and... With, and it's been really well-received and successful, so...
And they have real grass on that field, too.
They do, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have two questions. One's just a curiosity question. How, what will you do to the surface of the field to have the cars drive on? Will you be putting something else down, or can you just drive cars on the field?
We'll be putting down a protective surface, essentially the same one that we put down for any concert. That can be driven on by cranes, when you think about it, when they're, you know, building a full stadium stage, they can handle the capacity of heavy vehicles, so passenger vehicles will be easy.
And the other question was, as of now, are you going to keep the same timeframe that originally we had seen? I think it might have said the lot would open an hour, an hour and a half before the show. Why I'm asking, any issues with curfew or noise, you know, I guess just like a concert?
Yes, yeah. So, same timeline, no issues with noise, anything will be done well in advance of the town's curfew, which is 11:15. So, it'll be wrapped up long before then.
Yeah, the timeframe was talking about nine, I think it was most, the most shows would be wrapped up around nine o'clock.
Yes, right now, the way the Revs, they're in the, it's tournament play, so it looks like they'll have three matches. I think two of them are evening matches, I believe they either begin at six or seven, and then one is actually a midday match.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, go ahead, Chief.
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So, will people be, I know you said they're, you guys aren't doing concessions or anything like that. Will people, just like when it was going to be outside the stadium, will they be allowed to come in with maybe beverages or food in the car, whatever they come in with?
Yes, so there will be vehicle checks. So alcohol isn't allowed, but you are allowed to bring in your own F and B, and you will be able to exit your vehicle. And they'll be parked again in that similar sort of checkerboard pattern, so you'll be able to exit and use the space adjacent to your vehicle. You won't be able to move from, you know, checkerboard to checkerboard, but you'll be able to stay within that self-contained space that you're granted with your vehicle.
So you could pull out a couple of chairs, lounge chairs, and go in front of the car and...
Yep.
Watch it.
Yeah, so you can relax, be outside, but there's no, and there's no reason to leave that space unless you're headed up to use the restrooms, because like I said, none of our other amenities will be operational.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
So are you just charging like 20 bucks a car?
So it's actually, right now, the Revs viewing matches are an amenity that's wrapped into their existing season ticket member base.
Oh, okay.
So, I believe they're sold out, or that there's a lot of interest for it. So, we'll probably evaluate a pricing structure if we have availability.
For other shows, and other shows will be different, obviously.
We heard the proposal, do we have to vote on...
You approve the, but the difference is that it's a change, and so it's into the stadium, so I think it would just, you just want to re-approve the proposal based upon the new, new concept.
Oh, yeah, okay. Do you have that?
So you do have a motion there, stuff?
Christine, did you...
Yes, so you...
Just read, just the motion, or...
You need, you need to close the hearing, and then the motion after closing the hearing is written out correctly.
All right. Oh, we didn't, oh, the hearing was already open, because we continue this, okay, all right, perfect. All right, so motion to approve a temporary...
Move to close public hearing.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, this one, there's no public hearing on this one. This is, this is just, this was, the previous one...
We're in Union Straw.
We're not in Union Straw, yeah.
I apologize.
There's no public hearing on that.
Sorry.
Nope, okay. Motion to approve a temporary outdoor entertainment license for July and August 2020, on-field drive-in events at Gillette Stadium for Craft Sports and Entertainment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great.
Great, thank you.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks, Jess.
All right, so...
Now you are back into the hearing.
So Union Straw luckily was only right around the corner, so come on up, guys.
That was a tough question I asked you guys.
And then it went blank.
You decided to hang up and move on.
He's back, so that's, that's good.
And operate under the temp for the rest of the time, no. How are you? Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's technical. So Katie, can you hear us now, too?
I can, I'm back.
You're back, okay. So the big question...
Yeah, so my question was, are we changing the footprint of the restaurant by adding an additional 36 chairs?
In terms of the seating, the occupancy load, currently not right now. Because right now, in the, in the current environment, and we don't know when the new norm, Phase 4, will actually kick off.
Right, but this is for the permanent change, so...
Permanent change.
What I'm talking, like, when you guys originally came before everybody, you had to go through the planning board and all that and get approved for, you know, 134 seats, and, you know, you've got the two rest... Two restrooms and everything, so now we're adding an additional 36 seats.
Correct.
COVID goes away, so now you're, you're increasing your restaurant size.
We never reached full capacity within our restaurant, so we were always at 112 to 119, depending on if we added extra chairs. But when we sat the tables, normally we were at 112 chairs, seats. So if you add 36, we are over the actual number at the permanent level. So, we would have to remove some, some seats, or actually amend the occupancy load based on the patio. My question to that was, I thought, based on the approval of the actual occupant, of the patio by the, by the building inspector, that we have the square footage, we have the infrastructure to manage the additional seating. So it's not really an occupancy issue any longer, but if it's something that we need to address...
No, I think you are okay with that.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just the fact that we, it just, we're lacking, the board was asking for the clarification.
Got it.
Are you increasing the load? The answer is yes.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure that every other department checked every box.
Got it, makes sense.
I wasn't sure if it had to go back to the planning board, or... Yeah, because there's no, I don't have any sign-off, any documentation.
The one thing that's missing from this, Katie, is the actual application.
Okay, I...
Do you have that?
Can upload that to Board docs. Yeah, that was submitted, the full application.
And I thought I saw it somewhere, too, the building commissioner checked off on it.
It looks like it's on it, but it's not coming up.
Yeah, we submitted that along with the, with the whole plan.
Okay.
Alls I have is the lease agreement, two, the two postings, and then the mailing verification. I don't have anything else.
Yeah, I have two, we have two indications of the hearing, but not the, the actual application. So do you have the application in front of you, Katie? Do you have it with you, by any chance?
I do, yeah, I have, I'm sorry, I do have it with me. I can upload that to Board docs now, if that's helpful.
We just need it for reference right now, Katie, so if you could maybe, your question is, Chris, do you want to just...
Again, I just want to make sure that every board that needs to check off on this is good. I mean, I have no issue. Patio looks beautiful.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're following every procedure and everything.
Katie, can you confirm that everything was signed off for everybody here?
Well, because to Chris, Chris's point, same thing, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
But if we're going to vote to make it permanent, do they have the right occupancy for, at some point, indoor and outdoor?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Yes, we had the approvals, we've had the inspections, we've had all the sign-offs from that perspective on the actual patio, the infrastructure, the ability to hold, the number of seats that we intend to hold there, and we've gotten all those sign-offs.
So, but, but what about your total occupancy?
So the total occupancy now is 148?
Well, if we look at 136 plus 39, if we're going to go to the maximum, or 134 plus 39, we'd go to the, that maximum number, although we never, we never had it to the full capacity. So it'd be, what's that, 175?
175, right.
If you have, if we, and again, the reason why we didn't have it, we have the occupancy load. We didn't fill it up completely because it just cluttered the restaurant and didn't give us the actual atmosphere that we wanted. So, we, and it never actually hurt us, to be quite honest. I mean, we had waits, but it was something that we were okay with.
So your actual, your actual, your...
We would want to add the additional 30, 36 seats to our already-approved occupancy load.
All right.
I did have a verbal from Bill Casparra that everything was all set. I will check with his department just on the official certificate.
He actually notified me as well directly, so I, I'm comfortable with that.
And public health?
Yeah, and public health.
Health Department, signed off.
Yes.
Chief of Fire, signed off.
Fire...
Everyone signed off.
Yeah, it goes to all the departments before it comes back to us.
Police, the fire, the building, border health, yes. We made sure we had all those inspections and approvals in place before we actually opened it. And it was up to the, down to the wire to get the approval the day we did open the, the permanent patio, even under the temporary issuance, because we wanted to make sure we had everything lined up correctly before we actually put any guests on the patio.
Understood.
But do we have in writing...
Yes, yes.
What the occupancy is?
So, he...
What is total occupancy?
The building inspector could not sign off unless they met that. That's the issue. Okay, so, and so to clarify that, he can't sign off until it actually does meet the requirement, the load requirement. So, so that's, and that's why I'm confident that he did do that. So, and there's no issue with that.
We'll get that loaded up on Board docs.
Yeah.
I would, I would just say, like I said, not against it at all.
Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah.
I would say before we, we vote, we, we see, see that.
Well, I've seen it, I've actually seen it, it's just, it's not, it's not in the process.
But we're voting...
Understood, understood, but I...
And not against it at all, but I just think...
No, we want to make sure we do this right. We're here, we're, we're staple in the community, we don't want to do this in cutting corners.
You guys are still running under the temporary, right?
Yeah, we're fine under temporary, if we need to come back in, that's okay.
So my thought is this, let's close the public hearing. Let's postpone the vote two weeks till we get the...
Yeah, so Katie, do you actually have the application with you, Katie?
I think she was trying to upload it.
Do you have?
I have the application that is from the ABCC. I have, I also personally issued the temporary outdoor, which was okayed by police, fire, and inspections.
Okay, but this is for the permanent one. So you have the application for the permanent one, right?
But we had to have...
Yes.
We had to have the chief of police to chief of fire, as well as the building inspector, come down to inspect, not only for the temporary, but just for the ability to actually have people on the, on the structure, from whether it's temporary or permanent, that's my understanding of what they were. We were, we were under the assumption that that was being inspected for permanent use. Obviously, understanding that this hearing was there and we could operate under the, under the guidance of the temporary, temporary thing. Yeah, which, which we're not concerned about, but our understanding was that all those inspections were for the purpose of term, of permanent.
Yeah.
Correct.
But see, this, so, this is the thing, though. If whatever number is on there, like, and this isn't going to affect your business now, because we can't, you can't...
We want to do it right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in the restaurant, I work in the restaurant business, so it's not going to affect who you're serving now. But whatever number is, is on the permanent one, we just have to make sure you stay in that one. So my point is, you should get it for the amount you want inside and the amount you want outside, and put them together. And if we vote, you'll never have, you'll never have an issue with how many seats you want.
I was under the impression that we had that updated in our ABCC application. If not, then we will amend it, for sure, yes.
Do we have the application?
Yep, I'm trying to send it again to Christina, just a few moments, just trying to upload that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
And even whatever number's on there, if you don't go over that number, it doesn't matter, but...
Yeah, that's what we were operating under before.
I'm thinking as a, if I were the business owner...
We want the maximum number on there, of course, yes.
You want to make sure you can...
We want to make sure they were set up.
Yeah, have it legit, and then, then you can maximize your inside and your outside.
Nope, we are on the same page.
Yeah.
When do we...
Do you have it, Christina?
Not yet.
Yeah, when we close the public hearing?
Okay.
And postpone the vote for two weeks.
She's sending it to me right now, so that's the reason why. So that's the reason why I wanted, I just wanted to see, give us a second.
I would assume we wouldn't even have to make them have to come back.
No, no.
I don't want them to come back, that's why, I don't want to have to...
Hey, we'd love to wrap it up tonight, if possible.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to resolve this tonight, if I can, so if we, if it's been...
It's exciting to hear that there's going to be concerts going on at Gillette, I didn't hear about that plan.
Right now, it's just going to be, at last game, drive-ins to watch.
Oh, the drive-ins on the screens?
On the big screen.
Okay, got it.
At one point, they were talking about mini concerts, but...
It's being sent to you?
I will upload to Board docs as soon as I have it, yeah.
All right. Christina has it.
It's just a large file.
Yeah, okay.
No, I appreciate your flexibility in letting this, you know, circulate over before wrapping it up.
You guys are great, great, great business in town, we want, you know...
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the reason why, I'm anxious to get it done tonight.
No, we appreciate that, thanks for the guidance.
I just didn't, I was sorry about, we apologize for the...
No.
For the, for the, for the information not being there, so...
So how many seats do you hold, can you hold inside?
We're 136, I'm pretty sure, 136 are occupancy load now.
And then you put another 39 outside?
Yeah, we have nine tables times four, yeah. So, no, not 139, but 136.
Oh, yeah, so...
I mean, 36.
You want your, your licensing to say 175?
That's right.
So you can utilize...
The whole, if, if we choose, if we have the ability to, we would like the opportunity to, yes.
Well, someone comes in and wants to book a party?
That's right.
You know, you want to do something private, you want to, you want to use all the seating that allow you to have.
Absolutely, and I was under the impression that we'd be able to increase it based on, on the seating on the patio.
Yeah.
And that seating capacity should say 176, correct?
Yep. That's the one.
Perfect.
All right.
Perfect.
That's the number.
Wonderful, thank you.
Will that all automatically populate our, or do we have to go out and come back in?
I think if you just refresh, I'm just waiting for it to download and have an issue, but...
Do you want to do a couple of other things while that's refreshing, so we're not... Putting any pressure on Katie or Christine?
Nothing works as fast as you need it to when the spotlight's on.
Technology works great when it works.
Well, for me, for me, honestly, I mean, I don't think anybody's lying. I want to hear the number, I want to hear the big number.
Yeah.
176, yep, that's the exact...
That was the number.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
On the, on the application for the ABCC, it's listed as 176. So, the last step that I have, once the board does approve, is I do make sure with Lisa Berry that everything is signed off by inspections, which means it's already gone through everyone at Public Safety. And that will have, Union Straw will also get an official copy of that from the inspections department. That will have the outline 176.
Great, and then we'll just swap it out with our older license and keep it up on the front.
And you guys are all set.
That's great. No, thanks for the guidance on that stuff, appreciate it.
Katie, can you just clarify that? So, we're going to sign off on it, and then everybody else is going to inspect it and sign off on it? Is that what you said?
No, so everyone's already signed off on it, and Bill Casparra and his team have already signed off on it. I haven't physically received the official updated occupancy from inspections. But everyone has signed off on that.
Okay, all right.
Because they wouldn't be able to use even for the temporary permit.
That's right, they can't use it even without, because, because it actually temporarily increases their capacity as it currently stands.
Yeah.
So, even though they wouldn't use it, because they're not allowed to under COVID-19 regulations.
Right.
So, so, but, but technically, it does increase it.
Oh, oh, that whatever number, if it was the last number, they're going to be fine right now.
Yeah, either way.
But eventually, yeah, you want, you want that big number there.
Actually, we'll have the ability to fill the restaurant.
You don't have to come before, again, the big numbers there.
We'd love to get this taken care of in, you know...
So we're...
It's uploaded.
Okay.
It's the, it's the first page of it, but it's the third page in the PDF that has the 176. I can just... Do you want me to come up? This might just be easier to...
I got it, yeah, I see it. Okay.
Okay.
I've got it on my...
It's, it's on your, it's on your computer now.
Yeah, I just refreshed.
Yeah. Yeah, I see it now. Yeah, occupancy number 176. Your seating capacity is 150, but your occupancy number is 176.
This is 176, right.
Yeah. Total square footage, 50, 107 feet?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the additional square footage.
And three entrances and three exits.
Three exits, yes.
That's good, I mean, I'm hopeful of, at some point, we'll be more than six tables, six feet apart.
We all are hopeful that we get to, that we get to a new situation.
Have your big number, and then everything's been approved, and you can, then when the bands are lifted, you can have anybody you want up to, up to your big number, yeah.
That's right, we can go all the way up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all there.
Comfortable, Chris, did you...
Yeah, yeah, again, I just wanted to make sure that...
Of course. Of course.
All the boxes were checked, and we didn't, you know, leave anything off, so as long as everybody's signed off on it, I'm fine.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And then we'll make a motion to approve Kitchen Partners DBA Union Straw application for alteration of premises.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, on behalf of the ownership group and the restaurant, it's been a pleasure to work with this town, with the Board of Selectmen's and the planning board. We wouldn't have made it through, you know, without the help of the town, so thank you so much for all your support, we truly appreciate it.
Keep up the good work over there.
Beautiful, beautiful addition.
Have a great night. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Have a great evening.
Thanks.
You too. Thought Leah was going to tap in. So are we putting the banners on hold, or...
Actually, we thought we were going to have...
Paige?
No.
Cindy.
Cindy Hadad.
All right, why don't we give her a few minutes, maybe, you know, it did say 8:55.
A few minutes early.
7:55, so Mike, why don't you do assistant town manager's update? Sorry to go right to that.
The one thing I wanted to update is that a week from yesterday, we'll have our new building commissioner onboard, Mark Dupell, also a veteran, Marine Corps veteran, and he comes to us with quite a bit of experience, as a former contractor, running a successful business, but also 20 years of municipal experience in multiple towns, as a local building inspector and building commissioner. So we'll bring him in to meet the board when he arrives here next week. We'll give him a couple of days' work, you know, we'll give him his day of orientation, a couple of days with the, with the office, and then we're going to bring him around to get an orientation with a number of the other departments, so we're excited to fill that critical, you know, role. That's our one opening right now.
Bill going to stick around for a little while and help, or...
He's going to be doing a turnover with him.
Yeah, good.
That's, that's my update.
That's it. We're looking forward to meeting him.
Any other openings, or are you done for a while?
As far as, we have, we have two, two unfilled positions that have remained unfilled for some time. They're two part-time positions that we had discussed. I know with AdCom, I'm not sure if we discussed them with this board, but these have remained unfilled, you know, from the latter part of the winter, and we've decided to remain that way up until now. We get to a point where we need to fill those roles, and we're going to start with, you know, the asset position, we have to fill that position right away, so that'll, that'll be going out. And then the other one is the part-time, and these are two positions without benefits. Originally, this was a full-time position.
Yeah.
We had filled in the fall, and we've decided to split those into two 19-hour positions without benefits. So the second one is the, in the accounting department, so we're looking to fill both of those.
There you go.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, quick question for you. Are we still on next week, the 14th, for the code of conduct training?
Yes. I just need to know, I've heard from Mark and anybody else who's planning on attending those as a 5 o'clock and a 7 o'clock, and it'll be right here in this room. For anyone who can't attend those trainings, but, but needs that training, we are recording it, so we'll, we'll be able to, you know, upload the recording and to have people...
So should I reach out to you or Christina, sign up for, sign up for one of them?
To myself, please.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, let me know whether 5 o'clock or 7 o'clock is preferable.
Okay.
It'll be right here in this room, and we are recording one of them.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Good question, thank you.
Mike, I mean, Phil?
Yes, so I don't have a lot for a report right now, because we're trying to finish up the end of the fiscal year. We just, we've got one more week of closeouts for this fiscal year, and then we'll be actually paying into fiscal '21. When I say that, there's a, we have until July 14th, and then we effectively close out FY '20 and then head into FY '21. So we're working on those pieces right now, everything looks, continues to look good. We're working, we've been spending some time working on some, a lot of internal things, policies and procedures, things that nation that we're trying to get up and running. We talked, we started, we did an initial review today of, of the warrant procedure that we, that we put together, and then had some additional language that we want to add to that, based on the discussion we had this afternoon. And I think Mike and I have been working on some other policies and procedures, particularly related to the budget process now, because we have a whole new team, and we're going to document our procedures now, and then also, we're going to be working with a new platform over the next year called Clear Glove. Clear Glove, thank you. Just, there's all these different little nuanced names. Clear Glove, that's actually going to be a great tool that we'll be able to use to evaluate and to look at, you know, and then also for the public to actually see, take an in-depth view of how we, how we budget things and provide more information on that level. So we're trying to do more and more to provide that, that level of transparency that people are hoping to see, and trying to, trying to make that as capable and available to people as much as possible. Also trying to work on a strategic communications plan that where Mike and Christina worked on, and we had a first review of that today. We've got some more work we're going to do on that as well, and so at least we're in the right direction. Those are the things that are identified as part of the goal document that you'll be working on later tonight, and so we're well on our way into, into working on those, on those goals right out of the gate.
Thank you. On the selectmen's update, before we go to old business, anybody have anything on the new business, or anything they want to talk about, discuss?
No.
Sort of happy belated fourth to everybody. Hope everybody had a great weekend.
Yeah.
Even with all those signs on our highways about fireworks being illegal, I think I
saw more fireworks around.
I haven't seen as many anywhere, because there was no fireworks displays, but they were actually happening in our neighborhood.
Neighborhoods.
You know, I've never seen so many in my life.
So under old business, I see, you know, on Board docs was an updated version of what we discussed last week, and town manager's goals and review. Anybody's thoughts, having gone through, I think the updates, I didn't see any thing we didn't talk about, anybody else?
No.
No.
No, I reviewed it.
Yeah.
I thought everything that was discussed was incorporated into the document.
I thought so too, I think Leah did a great job. Bill, are you comfortable with everything we discussed?
Yeah, no, I thought it was fine, just we, the goals, I actually went through them, I wordsmithed a few of them because they just didn't all fully, actually, because they were doing things on the run the other night, so I actually cleaned them up a little bit, and I, but I think right now, they read fine.
Chris, you good?
Yeah, I'm fine, I just, so we're going to go with the revisions that Bill cleaned up?
Yeah, Bill and Leah, I think they, and Christina, right, all you guys?
I mean, Bill's were, Bill suggested edits were updated, and, you know, they were all seen, so I just, I put that, I did update it and put them side by side so you could see the changes, because I felt it was easier than going back and forth between the sheets.
I think that was a great idea.
Was there anything that, other than just some slight wording, was there anything else?
There was no substantive change.
It's all word, yeah, it's all just wordsmithing, that's all it is, yeah.
All right, let's make a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the town manager goals for FY '21 as proposed and edited.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to, once again, and I said it a couple of times, Leah did an outstanding job with these, she really did. And thank you, Leah. If you're watching us, hopefully you're not, because you're away on vacation, and you'll watch us at a later date.
Onto a good year for Bill with his goals and...
Yeah. And I really would appreciate the opportunity to do, you know, periodic updates and reviews with the board.
Yeah.
To see what the progress is, because technically, we're really working on a 10-month schedule at this point, because the evaluation typically is in May, or actually April for that matter, so it's really, so we're down to 10, less than 10 months at this point now.
So should we, like every...
Better get moving.
Every three months, Bill, on the old selectmen business, bring up where you're at and your...
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea, just to have periodic updates of it, you know, maybe once a month for the time being.
Once a month?
Yeah, or, I mean, if you finish that communication strategy, I mean, you don't have to wait three months, put it on the agenda.
Exactly, we can just roll that out, so everybody can see that, you know.
Well, I think it's good for us to know that we've given you realistic goals too, you know, and that...
That's the one concern I have, is that some of these things, it's hard to determine what the measurability will be.
Yeah.
It's easy to produce a document, but it's also, let's, you know, I don't want it to be in something that's going to be revised 35 times either, so we wanted something that, you know, obviously quality's important, so I want to make sure that we do it as few as time as possible in terms of providing revisions to it. Okay.
At the, Mr. Chairman, at the start of this, I had mentioned, and I just want to reinforce, that while these are the town manager goals, it's important to realize that these are the town's goals. So while you're setting this for the leader of the town, you're setting the sights for the town, so, you know, for the next year, as you do these check-ins, you're going to realize, this is how far the town has come towards these things that the board has said are important for the residents and resident businesses of the town. So I think this is really monumental, because this hasn't been done to this depth in the past. I think this is really, really important for the town.
It's an important step forward.
Yeah, good viewpoint.
Absolutely.
One of the things that isn't mentioned here is that we will, and even though I've